Call to order the common council meeting Wednesday, March 20th at 5:30 PM. Roll call?
Yes.
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 Confirmation of appropriate meeting notice? Next item is discuss and consider city's property and liability insurance coverage. And I'm sure everybody's understood exactly what all this says, so it should take on here.
Just a little reminder, as you know, we discussed at a prior meeting, the two proposals we received, and the council voted to stay with our current carriers. And at that meeting, it was decided that since we have gotten to this point, and hired a third-party consultant who is now an expert on our coverage, to have the conversation about what coverage levels we have, and maybe what coverage levels we should have, or types of coverage we should, we need, or don't need any longer. So, as long as I've been here, we've never had a real conversation in any depth, certainly not at the council level regarding this. So, I think that's tonight, we'll, for lack of a better document, I think we'll use this comparison document which goes through in detail each type of coverage, and maybe if we could step through those, and if anyone in the room has comments or questions about those things, we can, as we go through, and we can say, we understand and we agree, and we can move on to the next one, and in the end, whatever changes have to happen, you can let us know what the implications are then for contract and all of that, because I assume if we make some changes, there would be some implications to that. Okay, so, Joy, maybe if you don't mind, since you prepared this, if you don't mind just walking us through the different types of coverage?
Sure.
Okay, great.
Thank you. What my firm likes to do for its clients is to provide information that is understandable, which might be an oxymoron when you put that word in insurance, but having said that, what you have in front of you is a chart which lays out what your expiring, soon-to-be-expiring insurance program is, what the renewal terms that were offered by the insurance company, Drew Bear Insurance, and then what Palzman Johnson, an insurance agency in Madison, and the Players Mutual Casualty Insurance Company proposed for the city. Obviously, because the insurance policy of our contract, this document could be much, much longer, and we're happy to discuss if there are questions that come up, but we've noted down the major categories, if you will, of the coverages. The first one being general liability. And I guess my intention is to talk about each of the points that are noted down here, and if you have questions, just, okay? First and foremost, we talk about the limits of coverage, so the amount of coverage that the city carries. And there is, at this point in time, no proposed or recommended change in the amount of coverage that you carry. You have a $6 million limit. And that limit, right now you have a package policy, a package casualty policy. So what that means is your general liability, your automobile, which is also a first thing, your law enforcement liability, which is more than a second, and the public official liability, that's all wrapped up into one policy, okay? So, for those coverages, right now the city has $6 million per claim for occurrence limit of coverage. And you could have just many $6 million claims in a 12-month period, and the league's policy has enough in it, and half of those, that's in recovery, have on a full-claim basis. The pollution coverage that is offered by the league policy, and what pollution, or casualty, we provided a separate exhibit that was included with our letter, and it pointed out the types of pollution coverage that you have. So let me step back. The commercial general liability policy initially excludes all kind of coverage for losses arising out of pollution. And then they give you pieces of it back, okay? So what you have back is you've got coverage for losses arising out of the malfunction of heating equipment, hostile fires, chemical cooling pools, sandblasting, concrete tar, asphalt application, concrete paint overspray. You have above-ground pollution coverage, so if you have a release of pollutants above ground, you have a limited amount of coverage. Volunteer medical payments, you have that right now, so if one of your volunteers gets injured, they get a set amount of coverage, not the $6 million, they get a set amount of coverage. Same thing with personal property, your care, custody, and control. Liquor liability, you have that. Criminal defense expense reimbursement coverage, so for example, if you, if an employee or any one of you in your capacity is sitting on the city council, you are charged with some criminal offense. This policy will provide $25,000 of coverage for your defense, presuming that you're ultimately not found guilty.
If I could, Joy.
Sure.
Two examples on that, or why that's in the policy is, sometimes police officers will be charged with making sexual advances, you know, in lieu of writing a ticket that happened under the old program when we were in law, so. And depending on how the district attorney is feeling at the time, they may or may not bring charges, or may not investigate. So if that's the case, we will pick up the criminal defense cost, assuming the individual is found not guilty, or the charges are dropped, sort of thing. The other way that it can happen is if the DPW people plowing too many hours in a row, they fall asleep, go through an intersection, hit a car, there's been charges of, you know, criminal negligence, for, you know, for, you know, being out on the road 20, 24 hours, we would defend those also. That's the case, in case you're wondering why we have it, but that coverage would only come into play if you authorized us to do it. Because in cases where someone is charged of a, in particular, sexual assault or something like that, and they're found not guilty, it's one, a lot of times, it's in the community, well, everyone knows he was guilty, he just got off on technicalities. So if you don't want the defense paid, it would be more unhappy, but, but that hasn't been the case, and I've had only two cases in the 12 years that that has happened.
Is that the city's responsibility to defend that? If somebody gets charged for a criminal charge like that?
There is a, there's another statute that says you may pick it up, you don't have to. It's not a shall, you know, that you shall provide reimbursement, it's a may. We take the monetary part of that out of the equation, to say, look, we'll pick up a part of it, but it's still gotta be with your, with the council's blessing.
I'm gonna skip down to number eight, no-fault sewer backup, because that seemed to be of interest during the proposing process. We did include an exhibit for this particular coverage as well, and in terms of what it covers, under what circumstances, the loss history that the city has had with regard to no-fault sewer backup claims. And in terms of comparison of what you have right now with the league versus what EMC proposed, the league provides less, or excuse me, not the league, EMC provides less dollar amount-wise than what the league provides. Bail bonds, $10,000 versus $3,000, employee benefits liability, so if there, what that pertains to is if, in the course of administering an employee benefit program here in the city, an error is made in the administration enrollment, that sort of thing, that's what this coverage is. Could you give an example of that?
If you, if for some reason, somebody doesn't get enrolled in the health insurance plan, and a claim comes in, and all of a sudden, the employee is getting the bill.
I see.
And there was an error, like I said, in administration. The last item there, violent event response coverage, that's a relatively new coverage that has recently become available here, at least here in the state of Wisconsin. And the current program does not provide it. EMC quoted it. The value, if you will, of the coverage is, as compared to what you think it would offer, it's okay, but it's not one of those coverages that I, as a consultant, would say to my clients, you absolutely have to buy this coverage. And it provides things like counseling, if a violent event occurs, meaning you have somebody storm city hall with a rifle, and somebody gets hurt, and somebody needs counseling, okay? It might provide coverage for renting an alternate space, if, for example, this building were damaged due to a violent event. Again, it's relatively new. To the best of my knowledge, carriers that have issued this, one being EMC, one being Liberty Mutual here in the state of Wisconsin, I'm not aware of any claims that have been paid.
We, the closest something like this maybe would have come is, we had the city of Crandon, when their part-time police officer, full-time deputy, killed those six people up in Crandon. And we had an attorney on site the next day, because obviously, you knew there was gonna be, there was gonna be claims, it was just a messy thing, but had, had people wanted counseling, employees might have considered that under work comp. For police, probably not, because that's part of their job, as hard as that is. For other city employees, that's questionable in terms of, you know, maybe would have, maybe would not have. We also had the city of Fond du Lac, when they, their officers were shot and killed a couple, a couple of years ago, and they're, we took care of the counseling part for employees, but this, I understand the coverage is just something that we haven't, to tell you the truth, we haven't even looked at.
So, under this proposal, we wouldn't have it, we don't have it now, and we wouldn't have it, and in your opinion, this is one of those maybe, but not you really need to have kind of coverages?
Right. If I could back up a little bit, because Ramona sent me three questions to help frame the conversation today. One was, why are there differences between the proposals that were submitted, and why is the proposed coverage, i.e. staying with the league, being recommended? From my perspective, the consultant's perspective, it is, all other things being equal, it is the incumbent's job to lose the business in a bidding situation, okay? EMC said in their proposal, if you want to insure with us, you have to place all of the coverages with us, with the exception of the property. They would let you, the city, keep your property insurance with the local government property insurance fund. So automatically, your choices are extremely narrowed, meaning if you said, well gee, Joy, we really like this coverage, we'd like to buy it, my response to you would be, well, number one, it's added as an endorsement to the general liability policy, and in order to get EMC's general liability policy, you also have to buy their auto, you have to buy their public officials, you have to buy their law enforcement. So, again, your flexibility is significantly reduced when the carrier says you have to buy everything except the property. And in concert with that, then, the value of this coverage is not so tremendous, that I would say to you, oh, you should throw the baby out with bathwater, just so you can get the violent event.
Good. That's helpful, that's, for me at least, helpful analysis.
Okay.
And so from the league's perspective, then, you're saying at this point, you really haven't evaluated it as a coverage. I assume because this is what you do for municipalities, and only for municipalities, is that the kinds of things you evaluate over time, and if it becomes something you think is an important coverage, that's a conversation we have at renewal?
Right, right. You know, and at our policyholder meeting that we have coming up in April, I'm bringing in a speaker from New York, my counterpart from New York, talking about, if you remember when the Newtown shootings were just the week before, or the week after, I can't remember, I think it was a week before, there was some dirtball started his house on fire, and then went up on a hill and shot and picked off, and killed two fire volunteer firefighters. That thing almost died in the news right away. He's gonna be talking about that, and the ramifications on the community, West Webster is the name of the community, and other volunteer fire departments, just in terms of, because again, from a volunteer firefighter perspective, something like that is not part and parcel. That would be covered, generally the parts of what are under here for the firefighters, it's what about the rest of the employees that we have to look at? So I'm having our work comp people there to talk about who or how would we handle for people like yourself, you know, a huge tragedy did happen.
We had a situation where there was drowning at the municipal pool, and the lifeguards did everything correctly. It was really more or less a health problem for the, for the young child that drowned, it was implicated, but I know in that particular situation, we did offer some counseling to those lifeguards if they felt they needed it. So, we're kind of in a gray area at this point, as to whether or not.
You know, with regard to, as Joy brought up, all of these situations where there's a big shooting, they operate out of a different building, sort of thing. That wouldn't be coverage that you would have available under ours right now, because that's first-party coverage has such meaning, like it's your own property. I don't know whether or not the property fund would cover something like that under extra expense or not, it's, it's a question I've never posed to them, but.
So the property fund isn't represented here, and for those of you who didn't pick up on that, it's a state agency, and they don't have people they send out, as far as I know, to come to meetings like this, so our property, I guess we'll rely on the experts in the room as best we can to answer any questions you might have about the property coverage.
I used to run it for 12 years.
Okay, so we have an expert in this.
So I, every year, that gets a little weird, I can imagine.
Okay, any questions about general liability coverages?
Well, this violent event response coverage, I mean, this other company makes that look real good, do they throw that in there, maybe knowing they're not really ever gonna have to pay on it, to make it look like they're offering a better coverage?
There, let me see if they indicated a premium for it, don't think that they did, but, it was just included.
Yeah, so what I'm saying, are they throwing that in there to make it look like they're really offering something that's very likely never gonna be used?
You know, it's, it's one of those things, it could happen, and if it does, then there's an insurance product for it.
Right.
Is it likely to happen? Your guess is as good as mine. All right, on to the automobile, which is fairly self-explanatory. In terms of liability coverage, somebody driving on behalf of the city in the scope of their employment gets into an asphalt accident, you have $6 million worth of coverage, okay? Those considered insureds and covered by the policy, employees, volunteers, all of you sitting here. There's a physical damage deductible reimbursement of $500 from the league, and $1,000 from EMC. And again, what you'll find as we go through this document here, is that yes, there are differences, slight differences between EMC and the league here and there, but none of them are these bright lines where you go, wow, that is really important, we should make a change.
Again, for your, just for your well-being, if you're driving your own vehicle on city business, your limits are always primary, it's just the way the laws are in the state. If your limits are inadequate, or your policy has expired, you then have coverage under the city's policy, up to the limits of what the city has, and the higher than I own, so. So don't be afraid about taking your car to a meeting in Madison or Milwaukee or something. You do have coverage, excess of your own limits.
Okay, we talked of, the pollution coverage that's cited there, both of the carriers offered it, I mean, you have it currently under your policy. And again, like we talked about, the pollution under general liability, the insurance industry excludes all of it, and then gives it back. Same thing operates under the automobile policy, where there's an exclusion for losses arising out of pollution. This particular endorsement literally gives it back to you, though. They're a little bit more generous under the automobile policy. Freezing coverage and accidental discharge of an airbag is, I think, self-explanatory, the criminal defense expense is similar to what we talked about before, and Dennis's example was, snowplow driver, you know, working 20 hours, falls asleep, goes through an intersection, T-bones somebody, if somebody, like you said, is the DA, how do they feel that day, are they gonna bring criminal charges? Hired auto physical damage, there's a difference there in the limit of coverage, however, again, your loss experience doesn't indicate that you necessarily need $50,000, so $35,000, it appears should be sufficient. Okay, law enforcement liability, again, the $6 million worth of coverage is per occurrence is what you have right now. And what EMC did is they quoted a small, a lower level of coverage on what we call the underlying policy, and then they added an umbrella policy. So, just so there's no misunderstanding, the league is offering the $6 million, and then EMC is offering, is offering like a total of eight. And we can have, might as well talk about it now, unless, you know, somebody might say, well, Joy, why wouldn't we want to buy eight instead of six? Because eight is more, and isn't more better? And.
You like that commercial?
More is, and you want more, and you want more!
I'm sick of that commercial.
Oh, I love it.
We were talking about that on the way down, and I loved it when they came up, but now I've seen them all.
Yeah, I've seen it too many times.
Yeah, put that cheat on Grandma's back. You know, again, in the world of insurance, when some, when a client says to me, Joy, how much liability insurance should we buy? That's not a black and white answer, okay? And so what I counsel my clients is, picking a liability limit is a function of several items. Number one, what is your loss experience like? How often have you been sued? How often has your insurance policy had to pay damages on your behalf? Are your operations changing next year, such that you have new exposures that might prompt the purchase of higher limits? What's the additional premium? Because it comes down to, we all know, you're not, you don't have unlimited dollars to just go out and buy insurance, so we say, what's, what's the premium difference between what you have right now, and what it would cost to go to a higher limit? In our review of, you know, the city's current insurance program, and your loss history, and looking at peer organizations, and the laws that apply to Wisconsin municipalities, we came to the conclusion that there was no urgency to increase your limits from six to eight, and to make that the bright line that I've made reference to before. Okay?
I have, we insure about 370 cities, villages, special districts, two of them take $10 million limits, as opposed to six, and they're both suburbs of the Milwaukee area. Our average policy, if you were to look at our policyholders divided by the 370, you know, if I total up all the million, is about 4.6 million, okay? And as far as I'm aware, for municipality, not a county, a county is a different thing, because they've got jails, or they've got prisons, that they operate, or the county jail, and a lot of bigger claims there, but the largest claim that I'm aware of for municipality is the city of Milwaukee, when they failed to tie up a cement barge, had cement, not concrete, the cement in it, Christmas Eve, down in Jones Island, everyone was ready to go, and this is a ways back, but it was about a $7.5 million with interest, a claim. The next biggest is the city of Green Bay, with what's called a Monfiles case, that's where they threw the guy into the vat, because he had ratted on his fellow.
I remember that paper.
Sort of thing. That was settled for, I believe, $4.3 million. Our largest claim was just short of $2.5 million, but we had two of them arising out of the same occurrence, we paid close to $5 million on two separate that were out of the same thing, it was the Lake Geneva land use thing, if you've read anything about what was going on there, so. Now, that doesn't mean that something big can happen. State courts would be really tough, in federal court, sky's the limit, plus you've got attorney's fees, but, and with regard to the other coverages, our largest auto claim today in the league program is about $650,000, sort of thing, it's just, with a quarter million dollar limit, it's tough to get up to high limits. Police claim, just a little over $2 million, and public official liability, well, that was the land use claim, that was the $2.5 million. So, we haven't approached our $6 million yet, doesn't mean it can't happen, but you're, you're on the very high end, of course, of where the, that's my policy limit that I issue. I can issue up to $10 million, or $6 million. We have outlets to be able to get additional coverage, but it's costly on a permanent basis relative to what I can do with this league coming through this season.
Then you're getting to be an overinsured, though, correct?
Pardon me?
Then you're starting to get into being overinsured.
I'll take the money.
I knew you would, you know, I kinda figured that.
It's, I shouldn't be facetious about that, it, yes, yes you can, and I tell some people, I think I've unsold more insurance than I have, because you can't insure against everything. We, we try to take the uncertainty out of what your budgeting process is. The fact you don't have insurance doesn't mean, obviously, it's not gonna be your responsibility. We just wanna make sure you can say, hey, for what we think is a fair price, we can put that responsibility off onto us, and over a period of time, everything hopefully, hopefully goes well, but the fact that you don't have insurance doesn't make a claim go away, just, I wanna keep reminding you of that. But that's one of the reasons that we don't have a per-occurrence limit, because if you get multiple occurrences out of the same set, depending who or how something is filed, we can get multiple, multiple $6 million. It's, these two land use things are as close as we can.
Okay, let's see, so law enforcement, one difference that there, that does exist between your current program and what EMC proposed was a deductible, $1,000, and, you know, again, that gets to the question, well, how important is that? Your loss experience really is not helpful, which is actually a good thing, that means you don't have losses, okay? If you had a lot of losses, it'd be a little bit easier to say, well, you've had a couple of these claims, it's likely you're gonna have four or five next year, as an example, and therefore, expect to pay $4,000 or $5,000 more dollars. But your loss experience doesn't really help in that, in that regard. We talked about the criminal defense again. Punitive damages, coverage for punitive damages, so the league policy does not specifically exclude means that it would cover damages awarded that are categorized as punitive. And EMC says, no, we're not gonna cover those damages, but we'll defend them. Now, I'm gonna, just a little bit of education here, somebody may say, well, thank goodness the city is with the league, because they cover punitive damages. No. The reality is that punitive damages are very hard, if not impossible, to get out of a public entity, okay? It's just not allowed. It's not allowed by state law, and at the federal level, there've been, I'm aware of one situation involving, I think it was the village of Fox Point, where there was discrimination going on within the police department, and they actually assessed punitive damages against individuals, okay? Same thing happened very recently with a town of Beloit, which I mentioned in my letter, where there were punitive damages actually assessed against an employee of the town. How that was ever paid out, I don't know, because there was a damage awarded, and I believe it was then settled, quote, "out of court." So, it's good that you have it, just in case, you know, it's one of those bell or whistles, okay?
Yeah, if, if, if I could, how much time, by the way, do we have? Because I don't wanna.
About two more minutes.
Very good. Do you wanna die with my personal insurance? Early on in the program, we suffocated an individual in the back of a squad car, they thought they were putting a spit hood on, and they put a. They thought they were putting a spit hood on, and they put a biohazard put on. This was in 2004, and it was, it's when the police departments had a lot of biohazard stuff in their trunks, which I don't think they do anymore. And the individual, they've got the camera going, you know, to catch speeders and that, but it records everything. It's like, I can't breathe, I can't breathe. Some, if you can talk, you can breathe. They got to the station, he was dead or not doing anything. And all I can say was, thank goodness he was Caucasian like we were, because had he not been, everything that's going on with Milwaukee and most pieces that they have down there would have been us and Spades. We had three different departments involved north of Milwaukee. So that's when the police chief, when we first met with him, wanted to know what the limits were, and we said $6 million. He said, this isn't going to be enough. We did end up settling that for one and a half million out of court, because the guy was a bad guy.
Must not have been like that much.
Public officials and employment-related policy there, again, you've got the $6 million. The basis of coverage is occurrence with the league and claims made with EMC. And for all intents and purposes, for this discussion, again, it wasn't a bright line in terms of pushing the weight, if you will, over to EMC. Policy limit for back wages, the league covers it. EMC provides coverage for loss of salary and fringe benefits, and they limit the amount of coverage. Again, deductible, there is one under EMC, not one under the league. For items five, six, seven, and eight, what you have within the league program is that you have coverage for these types of claims, defense coverage for these types of claims, but it is limited. And you have a maximum for those types of claims of $250,000. Now, again, one would say, gee, Joy, but EMC covers it. So is this the bright line? Your loss experience doesn't indicate that these are so important that you should get an unlimited amount of coverage. Criminal defense, again, we've talked about that.
Could I ask one question on that, actually? I see, I'm kind of not sure if I'm following this layout of this paper here. It says general liability, and then of course, six there lists criminal defense expense reimbursement coverage, lists again on number six for automobile, and then, you know, throughout that thing. So under general liability, say we eliminated that, does that eliminate that throughout all of the other categories? Or is it each individual category you can pick as to whether or not to have it?
Okay. The coverages, your general liability, automobile, law enforcement, and public officials are all wrapped up into one insurance policy. There are four different insuring agreements. So you have a description of the general liability coverage, and then farther into the policy, there's a description of the automobile coverage, and a description of the law enforcement and POL, public officials liability. So within each of those descriptions, you have this criminal defense coverage. Now, when you say, if you took out the general liability, that's not feasible given the structure of the policy. So you would be going, you'd be going to Dennis, Dennis, we don't want general liability coverage anymore with the league. We just want automobile, we want public officials, and we want law enforcement. That's not doable.
Even under that one line item?
You mean to take out the criminal defense out of GL?
I think that's a true, right.
Oh, I see what you're saying. You could certainly ask the question. I, my guess, even if Dennis weren't sitting here, I'd say, you can ask, but you can take it out. I doubt that you're going to get much premium credit for it.
I was going to say, you're not going to save him too much money.
Neckles and dimes, niece.
Yeah. So. So, yeah, I guess I'm still not quite sure I'm understanding that then. It's listed under each subcategory.
Right.
And so you can't, either you got it or you don't, or can you, regardless of what costs, I'm just trying to maybe make better sense of this chart.
Right. And my insuring agreement as an example, as Joy said, I've got coverages, let's say A, B, C, and D. Criminal damage applies to A, B, C, and D. If I took coverage sealed, sort of thing, saying it's not going to apply to that, I could do that, but I'm not going to give you any credit for it. So I have only had two claims, so.
All right.
So one point of clarification, again, you have this package casualty policy, A, B, C, and D, as Dennis mentioned. Other insurance companies will issue a separate policy for general liability. You'll have a separate policy for public officials. You have a separate policy for automobile. You have a separate policy for law enforcement. So you literally have four separate policies, whereas the league has wrapped it up all into one. So, for example, if you said, if you went to EMC, if you changed and you went to EMC and you said, you know what, we don't want this criminal defense coverage in our GL policy. They could exclude it out of that one policy. Again, you may not get any kind of premium credit, but they could do that, and it would remain in the automobile and in the.
Right, okay, and that's exactly what I was trying to get at. Yeah, all right.
All right. So we, again, we talked about items five, six, and seven there, where you have coverage for the defense of these types of claims. It is limited. Question is, well, isn't it better to have unlimited? Well, look at your loss experience. Your loss experience doesn't, couldn't lead anybody to a firm conclusion, absolutely you have to go to EMC because they have unlimited coverage in this particular area, defense cost coverage. Exclusion for the eminent domain condemnation proceedings or inverse. I would tell you that this is a very, how should I say, touchy issue, not just from the policyholders or the city's perspective, but from the insurance companies as well. So you have, you have coverage for tax assessment and disputes, that's under item eight, but in terms of what the league provides, you don't have, you've got the cover, there is an exclusion, excuse me, there is an exclusion for those types of claims. And EMC provided it. But again, your loss history doesn't suggest that this is something that you absolutely have to have.
And one of the reasons that we exclude that, there's statutory procedures for eminent domain and condemning thing. And everyone knows that whatever you offer, people aren't going to be happy with, and that's just part and parcel of, you know, purchasing people's property when you have to condemn it. It's a business risk, and we aren't really in the business of assuming business risks when you know in a condemnation there will be a lawsuit.
Okay, under item number 11, we talk about the, how broad is the bodily injury coverage that's provided by the law enforcement policy? And as a consultant, I like to get coverage for mental anguish claims and emotional distress claims, because a plaintiff's lawyer, as you may already know, will throw in the kitchen sink in terms of saying, my client's been harmed, and this is what he or she has suffered, bodily injury, property damage, mental injury, loss of consortium, emotional, on and on and on and on. And so as a consultant, I like to get the broadest definition policy possible for bodily injury claims. So you have that with the league. Under EMC, they said, well, we're not going to give you mental anguish for employment claims. Emotional distress, as we say, is not specifically excluded, which means that it does provide the coverage, but you've got both of them under the league policy. Item number 12, the premium discount. If the city council conducts an eras and emissions seminar, which is designed to provide you education and hopefully, you know, reduce the likelihood of you having a loss, you would get a discount from the league.
Can we do that?
When's the last time we did it?
About four years ago.
Yeah.
How often do we have to do that?
That's a one-time discount.
Oh, I see, I see. Taking advantage of that already.
And we'll come down and do the presentation as often as you like.
Okay.
So.
Good.
No, we don't. Let's do this.
What exactly is a seminar?
Yeah, right. Oh, we didn't do it.
See, what happens, DVD is called in the scope of your employment. So for public official claims, you as public officials, you're going to get sued because of the decisions you made, okay, as opposed to accidents. So if you don't grant a zoning, if you fire Ramona or whatever, sort of thing, she's not happy, sort of thing, intentional items. This DVD talks about how do you try to keep yourself out of trouble? How do you separate letting staff do it? Staff is supposed to do, and their ministerial duties, and you do the policy setting. So it tries to delineate, you know, what your responsibilities are as a governing body as regards to staff, and I think some very good examples of, like sexual harassment, sort of thing, and getting involved in employee actions, staff matter versus a board matter. We put that out in, gosh, what was that, probably 2009 or something like that. And I've had about close to 80% of our municipalities have seen it, I believe. Didn't I come down here to do that? I've been to almost 200 of our municipalities putting that on. I could tell you the video word by word, I think.
Well, that ain't something you maybe should do every time you have new people on the board like me.
I think it's good.
They should at least see it if nothing else on their own, but not only the board here, but also if you have a library committee, if you have other committees, it's just good information.
Because if anybody needs advice on how to stay out of trouble, it's me.
And I second that.
I thought Mark was going to.
Yeah. We will look into that again, and if the mayor's inclined to have it at a meeting or some opportunity to show the whole board, otherwise it certainly is always available, but I think.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And again, when I came down here, what I'm sure I did at the same time is I go over the statutory protections that you as elected officials and that your employees have, and people sitting on committees, just so they aren't concerned that your personal assets are at risk. I just like people to be aware that I am serving, I know you're getting big bucks for what you're doing, but literally your personal assets are not at risk. And I just try to make sure people understand that.
Me do it during the reorganization meeting that night?
Immediately afterwards.
You have to have a meeting for the quorum, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to. I was just thinking. After we started the first time, we didn't have a regular, you know, having a hotel.
I was just thinking.
We didn't have a business, you know, much of the video.
The video runs 20 minutes, roughly?
I talk another.
20 minutes?
10 to, if I talk fast, I keep it to 10 to 15. But what I have noticed is, if you can have it at a meeting, that probably someone from the public isn't going to show up, I get a lot better questions than when there's, you know, citizens sitting in the audience.
That would be the reorganization meeting.
I was just thinking, some of the potential committees may not have the people that are going to be appointed to them. Let's use the library board, for example, they probably won't be here that night, so.
Right, and we have to go to one of their meetings, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm on the top of page three, where it says umbrella excess liability. Again, the league policy provides that $6 million.
You sure that ain't the top of page five?
Depends on which number you're looking at. It's our page five.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It's got both of them.
It's got three and five. Or maybe it's page 35, I don't know.
Your league policy offers that $6 million limit, and as I mentioned before, what EMC does is they stack or layer their coverage. So they have, let's say, $2 million down here on what we call the underline, because it's under here, and then above that is the umbrella, and it offers that $6 million. So, and it follows and provides coverage excess of the general liability in automobile. So structurally, that's how that works. You may have a personal umbrella policy, for example, which sits over your homeowner's policy or your personal automobile policy. All right, now, equipment breakdown coverage, some people refer to that as boiler and machinery coverage, so this is a property kind of coverage. And the way, much like all the liability policies that we just talked about, you've got your GL, general liability, automobile, they're all designed to dovetail and not overlap with one another. Same thing with your property-related policies. So equipment breakdown is designed to dovetail with the coverage from the fund, all right, so that there isn't this, there's this, okay? So the equipment breakdown policy, again, is a standalone insurance policy offered by CNA. And if you have a boiler that blows up, that's probably the best example, you know, not a fire, because the fire coverage would come from your fund policy, but if your boiler blows up, this is the policy that would respond. And that's a very elementary example. It provides coverage for mechanical breakdown. So you can just imagine what that might entail. That's what this policy is for. And you have a $30 million limit. So this is supposed to be similar to the amount of coverage that you have on your fund property policy, because again, the perils that are covered under this are different than what's covered under the fund policy. So you have that $30 million limit, currently have a $2,500 deductible for your ice rinks and refuse handling facilities, and $1,000 for all your other locations. And then under number three, four, five, three, four, and five, those are what we call sub-limited coverages. Typically, they're sub-limited. So for example, your expediting expenses, that's not sub-limited. And what I mean by sub-limited means that, okay, I just said $30 million. If you look at hazardous substances, instead of $30 million, you have $100,000 for damage caused by, or a loss caused by hazardous substances. And that's very typical within the insurance industry for these types of policies, for equipment breakdown, or as sometimes I refer to as boiler and machinery. Let's see. And in terms of how it compares with EMC, they're fairly comparable. You know, for example, under number four, hazardous substances, you get $100,000 from CNA, and EMC gives you $50,000. Well, so is the additional $50,000 from CNA the cat's meow? Do you have to have $100,000? Well, I don't know, you haven't had any losses, so your guess is as good as mine. Again, there was an obvious absence of these, what I call bright lines, or deal breakers, like you have to change because EMC offers you X and the league doesn't. And again, like I said when we started out, it's always the incumbent's job to lose the business, all other things being equal. Let's see, let's look at number seven, business income and extra expense included in the $30 million limit. EMC was only offering six. That's a little bit easier to look at and say, oh, you get $24 million more, you know, with the league policy. Spoilage, same sort of situation, meaning it's included within the $30 million limit, and you get $50,000 from EMC. Okay, data compromise coverage. Now, one, what I, I want to set the stage here. Data compromise is one name. Cyber liability is another one. Network insurance is another one. Security insurance is another one. This family of insurance coverages is relatively young in the insurance industry, meaning it's been around for, let's say, 15 years, give or take a few, as compared to fire insurance, which has been around for hundreds and hundreds of years. Okay, so when you hear data compromise, it could mean data compromise. It's also known as the security insurance, or network insurance, or cyber liability. The terminology is different, and what makes this line of insurance challenging is that you literally have to read each individual insurance company's insurance policy to know exactly what you're getting. There are some coverages, for example, like general liability, that are very standardized between the carriers, the insurance companies. Data compromise is not one. So what, we had this in the specifications, and the way that the carriers responded is, and I'm going to take number two first, okay? So cyber liability, so if somebody comes to you, the city, and says, your negligence resulted in me suffering damages, and the negligence had to do with your IT system, okay? A breach of security, a loss of social security numbers, okay? The league policy does provide that coverage. The EMC policy does not. Liability coverage is considered third party, meaning somebody else is coming to the city and saying, I'm going to sue. and saying, I'm going to sue you. Dennis used the phrase earlier before, first-party coverage. That's your property. It's your property, it's damaged by a fire. It's first-party coverage, okay? Number one, under data compromise, response expense coverage. Again, we noted there, first-party coverage. So let's say that somebody hacked into your IT system and got access to social security numbers. You have to notify, you know, the people whose numbers might have been released. You have to notify them that this occurred. Now, probably the most high-profile cases have been the TJ Maxx loss, where social security numbers or credit card numbers were released. This can mean big bucks to retailers, you know, to companies that collect social security numbers, not, excuse me, credit card numbers, as a way of doing business and do it online. For the city of Edgerton, okay, you have to notify them that the information might have been released. What does that mean to you? Well, so let's say, you know, like Dennis used the example before, like water and sewer, so the residents. So you say, well, somebody hacked into our system and they might have accessed where you live, you know, what your water bill is, that sort of thing. So you let people know. When you, once you get past that point, however, the question is, then what? Okay, so is one of your citizens going to come to the city and say, somebody hacked in, they know how much water I consume, and because of that, I'm damaged? Well, you go, really? You're damaged? How are you damaged? Tell me, and what does that damage look like? Okay, so they may make that allegation, meaning your negligence, I'm damaged. You have the coverage from the LEED in that regard. Okay, you would not have gotten that with EMC. Okay? Go ahead.
Yeah, on the data compromise, I suppose I am bragging. I know more about it than I think almost anybody, because it's become such a big issue and I think it's a Y2K issue for. We cover it up to policy limits, because I just cannot find where there's a big monetary Let's take as an example that laptop that has people's login information, your mother's maiden name, color of your eyes, your dog's pet's name and all that stuff. Literally, all you have to do is notify people that personal information, this information may have been taken. All you have to do is send a letter within 45 days, preferably if you can. If you're required to do that, we cover that as part of an expense. Haven't run into it yet. Be a minor expense for me, but we take care of that. The third part on here, the identity recovery expense reimbursement. Were you talking about the credit bureaus there?
Well, that coverage, identity recovery expense reimbursement, actually provides coverage for a person who has to go jump through the hoops to get their credit report cleaned up.
Oh, yeah. They would have to sue us to get that, and if they sued, it's our liability coverage.
So if we released information, they could sue us? This is a coverage under which they would, if their identity was stolen because we released the information? Okay.
Right.
So we have a liability coverage, as we don't have a I feel bad policy. TJ Maxx nonprofits, if I were talking to you as a nonprofit board as an example, I would, and I was the insurer, I would have a completely different mindset, different coverages, because your big risk then would be your reputation. So TJ Maxx and these other people, they do this because they have to sustain business from a reputational point of view. If you release data, you do not have to pay. There's no law out there that says you have to monitor credit reports for people unless you're in the business of accepting credit card information on a regular basis, and then you fall under a whole separate set of federal laws. I don't think you fall under that sort of thing. But even if that were the case, that would still be covered under our policy. Literally, all you have to do is send people a letter. And so when you hear about some of these data breaches and state of South Carolina, they, I think they let go $900,000, social security names and all that stuff for people. They felt bad, so they told all these people, they monitor your credit for a year. I'm like, well, I'm sorry you felt bad to do that, but you didn't have to. Because I asked my former partner down in South Carolina, he said, no, the state didn't have to do that, but they felt they had a moral obligation. We don't cover moral obligations. We cover where there's negligence. So I'm going to be coming up with an endorsement to the LEED's policy. I'm telling Mike on the way down here, and I just sent an email out to our agents today or yesterday, I'm literally going to have an endorsement to our policy clarifying that we do cover all of this stuff, because we don't, in a liability policy, what's excluded is excluded. If it's not excluded, you've got coverage. We don't exclude any of this stuff. But I want to clarify that the, what could be considered the first-party stuff is also covered. So rest assured, you've got, and it's not going to be any supplements of $50,000 or anything, it'll be policy. And I'm not going to charge for it, because I just can't find a risk.
Okay, the next category is crime coverage. Again, this is what we all in the insurance world, again, first-party coverage. Best example, employee theft embezzlement, for example. City of Dixon in Illinois. What was it, $54 million over the course of 20 years?
Mm-hmm.
Unbelievable. All right, so you don't have $54 million worth of coverage, okay? You currently have $100,000 and we're recommending that you go to the $250,000 level, okay? No magic formula to tell a city or an organization how much of this coverage they should carry. Again, no formula, in part because the number of losses, the frequency, is so low, you cannot project with any reasonable accuracy what your true exposure is. But we are suggesting that as of 4-1 of this coming year, of this year, excuse me, that you go to $250,000. Because that is more appropriate for the city of Edgerton, given your operations, given your size.
And that's what was bid, correct?
Yep, it was an option.
Forgery or alteration, if somebody were to get a hold of any check stock that you have and modify, you know, forge a check, or one that's already been made out, modifies it, that's what that coverage is. Computer fraud, if somebody hacks into your system and moves property, you know, like moves it from over here and gets it out of your system and property that you own goes to somebody outside of the city, that's what that coverage is for. Funds transfer fraud, if your financial institution, somebody gets into your accounts in your financial institution and they are able to electronically direct funds out of your accounts to somebody else, that's what that coverage is for. And, okay, number three, four, and five, you didn't have three and four, three, four, and five before, you're going to have it now as of 4-1 of 2013. Faithful performance of duty and treasure or tax, you know, you've got that coverage now, it's the same, it was the same cost. All right, property, whew. Any questions? No? Okay, we'll just go through the property. Again, this property policy is from the fund. It is designed to dovetail with that equipment breakdown policy that we talked about earlier. It dovetails with your crime policy, so that there's no overlap, they just line up next to each other, okay? You've got a single blanket limit of coverage with the fund, and what EMC had proposed was four separate blanket limits, meaning one for building, one for business income and extra expense, property in the open. So you have one big limit from the fund. Extra expense business income, you currently have $5 million with the fund. EMC was offering you $6 million. Again, one of those questions, is the additional million worth leaving the fund and going to EMC? Your loss experience doesn't suggest that that additional $1 million of coverage is absolutely necessary. Ordinance or law coverage, you have $2 million with the fund and it's included with the EMC, so you don't have an additional $2 million. Is that, do you want me to explain what that is, or no?
What's that?
Ordinance or law coverage?
I'd like to know.
Okay, all right. So there's three components to this coverage, ordinance or law. One is that if you lose a building and in order to rebuild, you have to bring it up to code. The incremental cost of bringing a building up to code is covered by this ordinance or law. Because your.
Yeah, best example is the number of bathrooms.
Yeah, or wider doorways. Yeah, okay. Your property policy, any property policy tells you that they will rebuild or replace like it was. But if the code says, you've got to have wired doorways, or you've got to have more bathrooms, that's going to add. So it's an incremental amount of coverage, all right? The second and third components of that coverage is that if you have a building, and it depends on your local code, if the code says, look, if you've got a building and it's damaged more than 50%, the whole thing has to come down. Ordinance or law coverage says, we'll pay for the undamaged part of the building to be torn down and the debris carried away, and we'll rebuild that other half. Newly acquired constructed property, both buildings and contents, you can see that the fund was offering $500,000. The coverage extended for 90 days. EMC is offering a million for 120 days. Under the contents part of that, automatic coverage under the fund, $500,000 from EMC. Increased cost of loss related and related expenses for green upgrades. And what does that mean? So you all, presumably, you've heard about LEED?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so that's what the insurance industry just generically calls green coverage. And the fund right now is not providing, if you had a loss to a building and you wanted to use material that is considered green or certified LEED to meet silver standards, for example, the fund is not going to pay for that. The fund's going to say, we're going to give you what you had. That's what the fund is going to give you. EMC said, yeah, we'll give you $25,000 worth of coverage for the building and the contents and related expenses. How valuable is this coverage? Well, the research that I've done indicates that to build green over and above what you had is somewhere around 3%, 7% more to build green versus just to rebuild what you had. So it's not as if, if you had a million-dollar building and it burned the ground, that would cost you $2 million to build a green building. You'd get a million automatic, let's just say you'd get a million from the fund, it's not going to cost you another million to get yourself a green building. It's going to cost you 3% to 7% of that million that you'd have to insure, okay? Property off premises is included, you get $100,000 with EMC. Surface water runoff, now this is a change that the city was notified of this year. Previously, you had surface water runoff coverage from the fund policy, up to policy limits, so long as you weren't in a floodplain. The fund paid a humongous claim for a school district outside north of Milwaukee. I think they paid 13 and a half million because of a surface runoff, water runoff claim. So the fund has dialed back that coverage to one and a half million, so.
You ran off into the basement of a high school.
Yeah.
Stayed there.
Yeah.
Dickley High School.
So, you know, it can happen, certainly EMC says, you know, we're not going to cover that at all. So that, to me, is a big deal, meaning you currently have unlimited, it's getting dialed back to one and a half, which is a huge reduction, but then to go to absolutely nothing, I wouldn't be comfortable saying to the city, eh, go ahead, take your chances, okay? Building, you've got some, you've got, it's not, building foundations and pilings, loss from freezing, thawing, pressure, weight of ice, it's not covered by the fund. It hasn't been, it won't be covered on a go-forward basis. You'd get a little bit of coverage from EMC, $250,000. You know, you'd say, how valuable is that coverage? Well, when is the last time you had foundations that, you know, froze, thawed, pressure, that sort of thing? I mean, it can happen, but again, it's difficult, again, clients say, well, is this really important, Joy? Well, here are the possibilities, A, B, C, and D on one side, and A, B, C, and D on the other. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. That's the situation with this particular, this particular coverage and a lot of them. Fine arts, $50,000, that's the same across the board between the carriers. Underground fiber optic cable, covered within 1,000 feet of a building, EMC was offering to cover it within the political boundaries. Let's see, property of others included in the limit, and leased property was included in the limit, subject to a $50,000 sublimit under EMC. Now, workers' compensation, there were different dividend programs offered. Let me back up. Workers' compensation insurance here in the state of Wisconsin, in terms of what you pay for it, the rates that are charged are set by the state. So no insurance company can come to you and say, for all of your clerical people, I'll charge you 10 cents. Every insurance company has to use the rate that is set by the state of Wisconsin. So how insurance companies compete then for your workers' compensation business is in the form of a premium discount, which is a certain percentage of your premium, and the dividend that they offer. The most important thing to remember is that dividends cannot be guaranteed by law. So even though somebody says to you, for example, even though EMC said, look, city of Edgerton, we'll give you a 20% flat dividend, and you can do the math real quick and come up with that number, I say to you, that is not your burden of hand. If the Board of Directors declares it, then you get it. So as a consultant, we have to make sure that you all understand that you can't just take your workers' compensation premium and take off 20% and that's how much you will pay. It's a maybe. It's a probably. Most insurance companies do pay the dividends that they offer to you when your policy renews, but it's not a guarantee. So EMC has offered this 20% flat. The LEED offers a combined workers' compensation casualty package dividend. And in the exhibits that we included with our letter, we lay out the history that the LEED has paid out. And again, you know, it's good information to have, but we don't encourage clients to focus on that as a huge decision-making criteria, because it's not guaranteed.
I, for example, won't know what your 2013 dividend is until this time next year. I had my Board of Directors meeting last week, at which time they declared the dividend for last year, 2012, sort of thing. So we do ours after the fact, and if we earn one, we pay it, if we don't, we don't. I don't want to say it's that simple, but. In our proposals, we don't do the estimating, or here's a 10% flat. It just doesn't work that way, because, as Joy has indicated here, half of our dividend is based on your premium, just what's your premium prorata with the other 370, sort of thing. The other half of our dividend pot is split up for the people that have better experience compared to the program as a whole. So each one is individual. On average, we declare what we know the dividend for last year. On average, it's going to be 7.5% for the, all the liability and the work comp coverages. 7 and 1/2% for the, all the liability and the work coverages. Yours will vary based on your loss experience, only have that number till Thursday or Friday this week.
So I'd be happy to answer any of the questions.
I have a few. So, the way I understand it's your job to help us determine whether or not we should stay with the league of municipalities, and then also, say we stay with them, it's also your job to help us to decide if we need to change the current policy we have with them, correct?
Right, our, when we were, when my firm was engaged, the purpose of the engagement was to get competitive bids for the City of Edgerton. So, the process that we followed was, we put together bid specifications, and we sent them out, and the purpose, theoretically, the purpose of bid specifications is that every insurance company that wants to offer you a proposal will offer you the same limits, the same deductibles, the same coverages. That's the theory part. The practical side, as we've noted when we've gone through this, is that companies will toss in deductibles that you currently don't have with your program, they will add a bell or whistle here and there, and it can make the process confusing. But, the purpose of engaging our firm was to use the bid specifications to get the proposals in, because it's been a very long time since the City of Edgerton has gone out and received bids, and it's just good business to go out periodically and get-
So, so say, like, again, so if we go with, stick with the league of municipalities, is it done now, are you gonna come back to us and say, okay, this is maybe what you should add or get rid of? Or is it, if we go back to the league of municipalities, is your job done then?
Well, we can certainly provide you insight as to what you should go with. For example, like, one of the items here is this 250, this is on my Page 3, under the crime section, where currently you have $100,000 worth of employee theft coverage, we're saying to you, you should go to 250. There weren't that many instances where there were other options. I mean, one option is for you to go from 6 to 8 million, and I would just tell you right now, I'm not, I, I can't say to you, yes, you should do that, because I really don't have anything to base it on, other than you get more.
Okay, see, and this is another question I had regarding that. If there's different deductibles, different limits, I mean, and it shows what we have here, but if we were to decide to go to a different limit or deductible on something else, and you always compare it to if something happened in the last so many years, or whatever, if you feel it's worth it or not, but I guess, I look at it as to whether or not it'd be worth it compared to what it's costing us if we changed the limit or deductible, and it doesn't list anything here as far as, you know, cost, so-
Right, on the deductible issue, for example, if you went to Dennis and you said, Dennis, we wanna quote with, on your law enforcement, that gives you, that gives you a $3,000, let's just say, $1,000 deductible, okay? Dennis would go, well, I don't know, I guess I can give that to you, but I'm not gonna give you much of any premium credit. So, to your, I think what you're asking is that, well, what if we wanted to have a $1,000 deductible? What if we wanted to have a $3,000 deductible? My question would be, okay, let's make an informed business decision, you're increasing your exposure by $1,000, what credit are you getting in return?
Right.
If you're only gonna get a $50 deductible, from my perspective, that's not a good investment on the city's part. It's like, for example, if you were to take your personal auto policy, and you'd go from a 500,000, excuse me, a $250 comprehensive or collision deductible to 500, you'd get a little bit of credit, but you're not gonna get dollar for dollar, you're not gonna get a 250 premium credit from the insurance company, you're just, you're gonna get a little bit of it. So, if you wanted a deductible, you know, I'd have to defer to Dennis in terms of whether or not they can do that, but I would also say that it's probably not worth it in the-
So there's no, like, one big ticket item in here that we could probably do without that we have that's gonna make a big back down on the premium?
As an example, if you wanted to take a $1,000 deductible on all your liability lines, general liability, lease, public official, deductible, that's claims and defense costs, that's how we do ours, sort of thing, that'd be about a 7 and 1/2% savings premium. So, are you lucky?
And do you have savings? I mean, that's part of, just like in your personal life, is if you have no savings, then you better have good coverage that doesn't have a high deductible, but if you have savings, and that's, one of the benefit of having that savings, is if you get dinged, you can afford to get dinged, and so you play your risk. So I think that's part of your evaluation too, and asking the questions about, how can we change this and save ourselves some money? And then you gotta figure out, will, what do the records show us, are we gonna save that money, and can we pay it? We have to.
Right. I guess the whole idea of having this done was that way we, the consulting firm could tell us if this is good or isn't good, I guess, rather than us trying to make that-
Yeah, the adequate, I think that's what we were looking for.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, that's why I asked.
Is our coverage adequate?
With regards to the people that take deductibles in our program, I think I have only seven communities. Most of them are larger communities in the Milwaukee area, sort of thing. The majority of people we insure are cities your size, maybe even smaller, we're, I don't wanna say we're the middle of the road, we, there's another organization called Civmic, City and Village Mutual Insurance, so like Beloit, Janesville, Racine Canola, we're insured with them, they take anywhere from probably the first 50 to the first $150,000 per claim deductible, but they're big enough, and that's who are how they operate. I get along well with them, we kind of play in different sandboxes, sort of thing. The majority of the insurers that we have don't have many claims, they don't have the expertise on staff in terms of how to adjust claims, which the Civmic people do, so we do what's called a first dollar. You know, if you have a claim, we know how to handle them, we handle them very efficiently, because we handle so many of them, and we just kind of take care of it, sort of thing, and you hope you don't have one. But if you do have, if you're to take a $1,000 deductible, I would still handle the claims, sort of thing, but it's just that you'd be paying, if we had to hire an attorney, or if we had to make a claim payment, a combination of both, we would send you a bill for $1,000, you know, by the time one thing was done, so.
Well, I think when, as, when the Finance Committee, when we decided to actually go through this, the whole, our whole idea was to make sure we had proper coverage, we weren't worried about deductibles. We wanted to make sure we had proper-
Work premium.
Proper, and got, was getting the best, yeah, that's what we were looking for.
Well, in terms of, I heard the word adequacy, and now you're talking about scope of coverage. So, in terms of adequacy, you look at each policy individually, meaning, for example, we've been talking about the difference between, should he have 6 million, should he have 8 million?
Right.
Okay.
What we're looking for is for you to tell us what you should probably have.
Right, and in my letter, you know, we, what we indicated is, there is no real substantiation for me as a consultant to say to you, you should go with eight, you absolutely should go with 8 million. The loss experience doesn't support it. Your operations aren't gonna change. Again, there's, you have statutory damage caps, you know, there, it'd be easy for me to say here, you absolutely have to get 8 million, because that's CYA for me. But, I don't operate that way with my clients, I say, you need to make an informed business decision, how much more is it gonna cost? What do you think your exposure is? How lucky do you feel? You know, depends on the day, I get that. But, $6 million, as we sit here today, I would, I feel comfortable saying to the City of Edgerton, I think that you have adequate coverage when it comes to 6 million.
And from past experience that you've had, I think we're fine with it.
Yeah, and again, we looked into, he mentioned Civmic, we looked at Wimmick, and, for example, just, let me just look here real quick, this is in my letter. So, Wimmick, which is a Wisconsin municipal mutual insurance company, they insure counties and larger cities such as Madison and Eau Claire, they get a, they buy a $10 million limit of liability, $30 million annual aggregate. But again, they have large deductibles too. So, adequacy-wise, from a liability perspective, I feel comfortable that the city has adequate coverage at $6 million, okay? The property coverage that you have, that limit was set through the evaluation project. So at some point in time, the city had the buildings evaluated, so that limit that you carried, that $30 million limit, that should be adequate, because not all of your property is going to be lost typically, knock on wood, that you don't have a tornado come through, but you know what I mean? Okay. So did I answer your question?
Yeah, I'm fine with everything. Actually, I got a good understanding.
And, Mr. Wellnutt's over here, or did I answer your question?
Absolutely.
So, if I could, two things, do you gentlemen have anything in the coverages that are here? I assume that what, the policy we will see will look like the coverages that are provided in this middle column.
That's correct.
Okay, anything you wanna add to the conversation that you say, gee, you didn't even ask, and we think this?
Not on coverage, really, but the only comments I'm gonna make is, my Board of Directors has told me that if we can't have, you know, the best coverage, and I say best, that's relative, but either the league has the coverage that its members needs, or we shouldn't be in business, so that's why you're seeing a lot of the yeses and no deductibles. One other thing is, as of July of 2011, the League's insurance trust, this is the insurance company, we used to have the insurance trust when Warsaw was the carrier for 17 years, or reform, the own company, that trust is purchased for its members, a program called Agility. What Agility does is, if a tornado, lightning storm, flood, whatever comes through, and you need auxiliary generators, auxiliary pumps, you need satellite phones because your communication system's down, you've lost this building, and you need trailers to operate out with computers in, the Agility program is a program that we have that you can give, have up to seven, what they call sites, meaning declarations of an emergency, that they guarantee you'll have the stuff there within $24 to $48, pumps in particular, and what your residents are looking for is, keep the water flowing, I wanna be able to flush my toilets. You do that, they're gonna be happy, because they understand other stuff. But do that, you may be in line, if it's a big tornado, big event, flood or something, you may be in line with a lot of other people. This service that we purchased guarantees that you're gonna have it there, okay? What it doesn't do is pay for it once it gets here. You will get it here quickly, you'll get it here at regular market price, not the market price because everyone else wants it at the same time, but the extra expense coverage that Joy was talking about, that's the coverage under your property policies if it's an insured loss, so if it's a tornado, if it's a fire, if it's a mechanical breakdown, you know, the wellhead snaps, or the shaft snaps and it goes down, sort of thing, that kind of coverage is covered under the policies you have, and the extra expense will pick that up. What we're really buying is quick response for people, and I'm gonna leave a article behind that we had sent out not too long ago, but when Hurricane Sandy went through on the East Coast, I asked them what happened with their generator requests, they had 66 requests for generators, 19 were delivered in 12 hours, 28 were delivered within 24 hours, 18 within 48 hours, and one generator took six hours because of the size of the semi and the trouble they had getting it there. So, just, just, again, the league wants to take care of its members, because they know what business you're in. My directors, Dan Thompson, obviously, is the executive director of the league, is by that position, he's a director, three others are elected officials, such as yourself, and the other three are administrators or managers, sort of thing, so that's the board that I answer to, and that's the board that's overseeing what's going on, so.
So that's a form of disaster recovery?
Okay.
That you have, gets you to the front of the line, get to budget.
So I have one other thing, as you noted probably in the information you received in that full packet when we evaluated these, there was a waiver, a disclaimer, I'm not sure what the title of the document is, but it's a document that we are recognizing that Gonder has told us that the rating, or the unrated insurance, unrated insurance company, that the league is, and we're making a conscious decision, knowing that they're an unrated insurance company. So we're asked to sign a document, understanding that we are aware of this, so, again, in full disclosure, I wanted to make sure you were aware, you remembered that, that that's the case, and you're making this decision knowing that that's the case, so, we'll sign those documents.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
This was very helpful.
Made a very complicated situation a whole lot easier to understand.
I was gonna say, if I can take a minute on your personal insurance. Real quickly, real quick.
I got my insurance guy calling me enough about that.
Quickly, if your house is burning right now, where do you have your video inventory? That, of course, you all have, right?
To my brother's house.
Good, good, that's good, you're probably two of the first two people I've said, you'd be amazed, the insurance companies, oh, you don't have it, they honest to God do, because you're gonna forget so much.
That's a good idea, I should do that.
Number two, you better have sewer backup coverage on your homeowner's policy, because even though the city has no fault, the sewer coverage on your homeowner's policy will do replacement cost, we do actual cash value, we need to appreciate replacement cost. And third is, if you're, you don't have a personal umbrella, then probably don't buy anything, you're wasting your money for liability, have at least a million, perfectly, $2 million personal umbrella, so.
It's very inexpensive.
I always hate leaving meetings without a policy.
How much of a kickback do you get for telling us that?
I'm not giving him any of that.
That doesn't cover that E and O thing, though, does it?
Here was a, I get very emotional when I talk about some of the liability, and I'm gonna probably, one of our main losses, explains also why, if you're, I shouldn't say that, but we do, but it's just, it's just a lot of shit.
Great, thank you.
Motion to proceed with the coverage we have.
I think there was a motion, if I'm not mistaken, at the prior meeting, we made a motion to stay with our current carriers, so that is in place, I guess, the, Chris, if anything out of this meeting, we want to make a motion, if there were one, it would be on the coverage levels, do we agree with the coverage levels that were proposed?
I make a motion to do so.
I'll second.
Let us agree with the coverage levels.
Yep.
Is there any discussion?
No, I think these guys did an excellent job of explaining here, so I'm good.
Oh, good.
I just say, guys and gals, excuse me.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
The board of confidence.
All three.
Hearing, no further discussion, roll call.
Mark Goldman?
Yes.
Chris Goldman?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Davis, David, or Tom?
Yes.
Either or.
Either, either or, there, David.
It's bingo, right?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next.